Work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. Mayor may limit the time for such presentations. So I will call this meeting to order. And, well, I've already done that, but it doesn't look like we have a roll call.
No roll call.
So, Manager Foggan, I will go ahead and turn this meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the Mayor. I have not seen all the participants yet, but all the council and the leadership team. And then anybody watching live on our YouTube live feed, welcome. This has become part of our tradition of kicking off the budget and the budget season. Just for those of you that know, we've actually been involved with the budget since 2020, back in the start, I guess, November, I guess, late October. We have been working on budget. But for kind of the kickoff, this will always kind of be the kickoff for the official budget coming up this year. We're working on budget year 2022. Our fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th. We've got a presentation that we're, between Tina and I, we're going to walk through with you. And I'll just start sharing that presentation now. So. Yes. For those of you, I think everybody should have received the PowerPoint presentation for later review, that Ms. Tina sent that out this afternoon. So I don't think there's any need for anybody to really scribble and take notes or worry that you don't have the information. This was emailed out to everybody. So if you haven't seen, if you don't receive it, let us know and we'll get it to you. But I saw the email go out, so everybody should have it in their inbox. As far as this meeting is concerned, the agenda is going to, we're going to follow this agenda. We wanted, we thought it was important to talk to you about the COVID-19 and the impacts that we, that has had or not had. And then we're going to move on and share with you where we are with the 2021 budget. We are just over halfway through the fiscal year. We reached that halfway mark January 1st. And so we're just going to share with you. It won't be, of course, all the way to December 31st because those numbers aren't ready yet. It will be how we are doing through November. After we go through the actual revenues and expenditures for this year, we're going to cover PS, PRS, unfunded liability, one of our favorite topics. And then we will move on to a five-year capital improvement plan. This will not include any of our enterprise funds. It will be really just our general fund, capital project, plan, projects. And just keep in mind that, of course, we're in the process of building and developing what the capital improvement plan will be for 2022. But what we'll be going over with you is the existing plan that we're currently operating in, in this fiscal year. And then number five is our forecast for 2022 through 2026. That will both be revenue and expenditures. And then has been our habit is to talk about revenue streams, potential things that we're working on or have talked to you about in the past and where we are with those. And then seven will be progress on rate studies. As you know from updates from me, we've had a number, been working on a number of rate items. And so we will, or rate increases, and we will talk to you about that. And then finally, the last thing we'll have is just budget calendar. As we go through this, if you have questions, please let us know. I know that we really hated doing this virtually, but the world we find ourselves in, just at this point, getting together just doesn't make sense. And there's people that we're trying to keep safe as well. And so bear with us as we do this virtually. So from, as I said earlier, Tina and I are going to tag team this. And so we will start with her talking about COVID and its financial impact, unless there's any questions before we start. All right, I'm not hearing any, so. Ready?
I am.
All right.
Thank you, sir. All right, so when we prepared the fiscal year 21 budget during our work session in May, we brought this slide to you to share how we were preparing for COVID-19. We looked at, we thought about unemployment. We thought about local businesses. We thought about the building industry, if it was going to be affected, and likely so, we felt. We thought about the recovery and what that would look like. Is COVID going to return and then what's going to be the outfall of that? We thought about, is this the new normal and how is that going to affect our revenues? And then we said, okay, so based on all of that, what type of budget do we develop? And so we took all of that into consideration as we prepared the fiscal year 21 budget. And so we're going to walk through a few stats and how we, how we did prepare for this. Next slide. Okay, I wasn't sure if you'd. So, so how we prepared is we talked about our fiscal year 20 estimates pre-COVID. We knew that we were up over 8% in sales tax at that point in time, so February-ish. And so we thought, at that time, we would, our estimates for fiscal year 20, we're going to be pretty strong while COVID hit. And we changed our fiscal year 20 estimates, knowing that tourism and restaurants and people would probably tighten their pockets and things would change. And so we reduced those estimates for fiscal year 20. And then knowing that COVID would go into 21 and hit in the wintertime or potentially, we were conservative and adopted a conservative budget. So you'll see how we, how we did budget for our sales tax, our state shared revenues, and our licenses and permits. So what has unemployment done since the onset of COVID? So when we look in February and we look at each month through November, and this is the Lake Havasu Kingman unemployment rate. In February, we were at a 5.5% unemployment rate. And you will see that in April and May and June and July, we had some double-digit figures. But you will also see that things are starting to recover. So in November, we're at an 8.7% unemployment rate. Then we also look at our new business licenses, thinking, okay, those are going to taper off. We're going to have less, fewer active business licenses. In February of 2020, we had 1,702 active business licenses. At the end of December, we had 2,160. And you'll see that the yellowish bar, which is the last bar from July through December, almost all of those have surpassed the prior years for new business licenses that have been issued, in addition to just having more active business licenses. And so then looking at our building permits, we went ahead and showed from fiscal year 2005 to fiscal year 21, year-to-date. When you look at fiscal year 20, in all of 20, so in 2019, we had 242 single-family residency building permits and seven new commercial permits. In 20, we had close to 340 single-family building permits and nine commercial. Where we are through December is already at 199 single-family building permits and six new commercial. And so we are estimating, of course, a pretty, a pretty high number for the end of the year for building permits, something that'll be very close, probably much, even, even higher than fiscal year 20. And so then just looking from the December 2019 to the December 2020 period, you can also see by month, how, from that February 2020 period through the December 2020 period, how we have continued to issue, issue, issue building permits. October 2000, October was the only month that was slower than what we've experienced in the last year. And so what are we seeing as the results? So you'll see again what our pre-COVID estimates were going to be, over 8% increase in sales tax, what our post-COVID for fiscal year 20 was, and what we actually ended up with. So you'll see that our, our post-COVID fiscal year 20 estimates, we expected to collect about $18.2 million in sales tax revenue. We collected $20.4 million. And then looking at where we adopted the budget at, we expected to collect 17.1. We're estimating to collect $22 million by the end of the year. That's it, sorry.
All right. So some pretty surprising numbers in the, in a good way. And just wondered if anybody had any questions regarding the COVID and what the numbers and graphs were showing from Ms. Tina.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the questions that you looked at were, was business closures. Do we have any actual numbers on how many businesses were lost in 2020?
So it's not something that I have at my fingertips. The way that, and we might be able to get something from ED. I'm not sure if they would have something, have a better gauge on that. But as far as business licenses are concerned, we could look at the expired business licenses or the non-renewed business licenses. I don't know if that would give us a good gauge or not, but we could, we could look at that number and, and possibly gets, get an idea.
Yeah, I don't know that business license is really telling in that, you know, someone might be running behind and not, have not paid theirs. That does happen from time to time. The, I guess, the, the one factor that we wanted to show is, and that I think that we had, we were convinced, and your question's legitimate. We expected to see that fall off and stay down, not, not be above or greater than it was at the start of the year. And that's, I think, I think that's the, the point that we were trying to demonstrate. But I don't know that internally we have, that we know which businesses went out of business during the year without some pretty big analysis. And again, there's people who may be tardy on paying their business license, so.
Yeah, you know, I ask because we hear a lot of talk in the community about losing businesses because of COVID or shutdowns. But I just wondered if there's any data to really back that up? Or, you know, as we see, as we see here that you have more business licenses or what we're feeling in the community, all this construction growth, those are two different stories. So I'd love to know what the truth is, you know, and that's why I ask.
Yeah, and I think the truths in the numbers, to be completely honest with you, we, you know, I'm not saying that we have not seen businesses go under because we, we can name several pretty well-known ones, especially in the downtown area. But there's not a, there's not been a bunch of shuttered windows and doors as part of the COVID. And so again, not knowing the, you know, what some of the specifics people may be referring to. But even, I guess, one of the things we would say is even if the business was in trouble, they still paid their, their business license. So, and we, as far as we know, we're still operating.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good question.
I have a question.
Yes.
The local sales tax figure, does that also include the online, the Wayfair?
Yes, that's all of, that's all of, all of the revenue, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Because there were several people doing more online shopping, so I'd like to see.
So that's, that's a great question, Councilor Semley. The, the, we expected to see Wayfair go up or, actually, we didn't expect to see it go way up. The, the thing about Wayfair that I think people, there's been a pretty big misunderstanding about Wayfair. And I think we can take just a minute to clarify that. A large amount of online sales were falling under the sales tax distribution already. There had been several businesses, Wayfair, of course, was the, probably the biggest one, who was suggesting that they didn't have to, that they didn't have to pay individual sales tax because they weren't located with, they didn't have a building in, in the state that they were selling to. And that's where this legislation comes from. So we did see, expect to see an uptick in Wayfair. And we expected to see an uptick just in online sales anyway, which I'm, I'm sure that a large amount of what we're seeing in the increase is a lot of online purchases. But it, the interesting thing about sales tax was that it was all up. Where Wayfair was up, online sales were up, and our, our brick and mortar purchase, sales tax were up. So surprise, again, that was kind of the silver lining behind COVID. The one thing that I, that Tina and I continually talk about, and I will, again, you'll hear me talk about this through the budget process, and I'll just mention it now, is that we're still waiting for the other shoe to drop, which is, are we, we, we can't expect to see these numbers continue, at least it seems not, it seems improbable that, that we will continue to see these, a large increase in sales tax revenue. When, you know, when that fall off happens, I'm not exactly sure, if it ever, if it ever will, to be honest with you. But we're still cautiously optimistic that at least through this last year. So the COVID emergency declaration occurred in March of 2020, and we're fast approaching 2021 March. It'll be a full year. And for Tina and I, as we, as we look to do the 22 budget, and I think you'll see this in our forecast, are still thinking that there is a decrease, not huge and not monumental in like we'd saw in 2007 or 08 or 09, but that this large increase in sales tax is not sustainable over time. And which we, which we will talk about here in just a minute, so. Any other questions?
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
Is it possible that some of the webinars I've attended indicate that the impact of things like the stimulus and the increase in unemployment benefits for, you know, a period of time and, and now again, have contributed to, to spending, which resulted in the sales tax increases, as people spent more on their home and on, you know, commodities rather than, for example, travel? Or I think the place we've lost is in hospitality and tourism. But, but those are things that are not, like you say, they're going to go away, so. But the impact, I don't expect for several years. Would, do you, do you have that kind of viewpoint? Or have you discussed that, that element? Especially when, you know, for Arizona that had such a low unemployment rate, weekly rate, to have a big infusion in that first bill really helped people to spend more and survive?
Yeah, and I think you're right, Mayor. The one thing that, that the team did through the first part of fiscal year 21 is concentrate and, and worry about our tourism side. I think that that's something that we still are very concerned about. We will be talking about that in the, in our budget meetings with the council. You know, how do we rebuild our tourism to make sure it comes back strong and it doesn't lag for a long time? But I think it's kind of that combination of stimulus, people staying home. You're absolutely right about the travel, and they, they dedicated their funds to home improvements and that kind of thing. And, but still, we, we still expected, as Tina mentioned, kind of the tightening of the wallet, holding it a little bit tighter. And didn't, we didn't really experience that as much. And so I, I still, as I said, I, I still waiting for that shoe to drop. And I, I think you'll see that we're pretty cautiously optimistic. We're not showing a huge drop-off in our forecasts. But I think it's kind of a multi-combination of, of a number of things, for sure. All right.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Councilor, or Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And what about the factor of just regular population growth? I mean, we have a lot of people moving here. You see it every day, and of course, they're spending their dollars locally. A lot of them are, as we know, are moving from California. They've sold their properties over there for cash. And there, I think they're infusing our, our growth here too, which is a, is huge blessing.
Yep.
And I think we're going to continue to grow. I know I was talking to one of the builders, a couple of different builders, and their homes are all sold through what, all they can build this year, they're already sold. They're pre-sold.
Yeah, I've heard that, yeah. The construction piece of our economy is, is doing really well. And I think growth is definitely played a role. It's definitely played a role in our sales tax increase. So, yeah, thank you for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's show you what the 2021 budget looks like so far this year. Ms. Tina?
Okay. So where we are, July through November. So wanted to show a little bit of history over the last few years of where we were in fiscal year 18 and then 19, 20, and where we are today through the November reporting period. I do want to point out that this does not include the collections made during the 1% additional tax that we were collecting on capital projects and pavement preservation. It would skew those comparisons, so we pulled those numbers out. So you'll see that between 18 and 19, and that was normal. We were experiencing normally between 3% and 5% TPT growth. You'll see that through 18 and 19. And then you'll see that big jump in 20. And we are estimating, or we are at a 10, we're at $10 million in 21. And that is a 16% increase. It's just, it's really unbelievable where we are today. Our retail sector is up 17% year over year. And the mayor alluded to our tourism being down, and that is the case. Our tourism tax is down 33% year-to-date, and our restaurants down 5%, we would expect that. But I do have to say, on the restaurant side, we're seeing recovery. We're already back to where we were before, pre-COVID on those collections. So hopefully, hopefully that will, that will, that will recover. But, but that's where we are year-to-date. So this just shows the categories or the major categories of tax. A lot of numbers on here, but just if, if you're interested, you can refer to this slide to see exactly what each of the, how each of those categories have performed since fiscal year 18. And as I said, retail is up significantly. We're almost at $6 million this year, which is the largest portion of our tax collections or the largest category of our tax collections, whereas last year we were at just under $5 million. So state shared revenues, similar, similar as TPT, certainly not to that large of an extent, but we are above where, where we expected to be in sales tax, where we are in urban revenue sharing. I do want to point out on that particular one, it's the income tax collections from two years prior that the state has collected. So they always know exactly what we're going to be receiving. So this really isn't based on today's economy. It's from the economy from a couple of years ago. And then our vehicle license tax and HERF. HERF is, is very similar to what we collected at this time last year as well.
And just, I'll just jump in on this one. One of the things that, that we have been monitoring is kind of what the state's reporting on state shared revenue. They, they are cautioning cities that over the next year, two years, some of these numbers will be down. If you have been watching, the governor just released his, his proposed budget to the state that has a $200 million tax cut over a three-year period. The league is, is reporting that in that, in that cut, it will be directly, that cut will directly affect cities as well in the distribution of their state shared revenue because it's tied to the income tax and to this portion of the income tax. So those are things that we're going to be watching very, very closely and, and paying attention to what the state revenue projections are looking like over the next couple of years as well, so.
Ron, when will the new census numbers impact our state shared revenues?
So we would anticipate that the state shared revenue population calculations will not really go into effect until 2022 is, when, when those new numbers will start to be used. There's going to be suspect, I don't know if you guys have been watching the news or not, but there's going to be some cities that are going to challenge the census because they believe that they were undercounted or that they had really poor self-reporting. Our neighbor, Bullhead, it's been, I've kind of heard rumblings that they're going to challenge their numbers. So I don't think that we'll have anything official to base state shared revenues on until 2022.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so where we are in general fund. So looking at the general fund, we are 41.67% through our budget year. And so this gives you an idea of how much of the revenues that we have collected year-to-date and whether or not that's below or above what we expect to collect at this point in time, which on average would be about that 41.7%. And you'll see in all of our big categories, our big, our big revenue generators, that we are well above that 41.67%. So overall, the general fund has already collected almost 65% of its total, of its total revenues. And I do want to just point out that there is that AZ cares of $3.3 million that we collected this year. So that also is contributing to our year-to-date numbers. And then where are we on the expenditure side of the general fund? So 41.67, you can see that black line on the screen. That is where we are in the budget year. And you'll see that other than internal services, all of the expense classifications are below. So the departments have spent less than what they should, you would expect them to spend at this point.
And I just, I want to just give credit to the departments. One of the things that we've been stressing, we started stressing during the, the outbreak of COVID was that, that we needed to be cautious, careful and mindful of where we were, where and how we were spending our money. And I just, I want to give kudos to the leadership teams throughout the organization for, for monitoring and paying attention to their budgets. And, and thank them for, for being good stewards of the funds that they've been allocated.
I have a question on, on the CARES funds. Sorry, we flipped over a little quick. Have we received all the monies that we are due to get at this moment in time from the CARES, CARES monies?
We sure have, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Okay, so then looking at HERF, we wanted to report on this. This is always an important fund. And when we look at this particular fund as well, you'll see that we are at almost 52% of those collections year to date. So above where we would expect ourselves to, to be. We are above where we thought we would be on highway user revenue and also where we would be on TPT. And so then looking at the expenditures, you'll also see in this department, they have not spent where we expected them to spend year to date. Now, we do have, I want to say, I know Jack shared with this, this with everyone last night, that we have $1.2 million allocated to pavement preservation. And he has, he is already asking for more on that. So he is planning on, on spending all of that year to date.
Yeah, and it's, it's worth noting, capital project wise, you know, that, that capital project or capital LA could easily be well over the 41%, depending on when the equipment or when items are purchased. And just, it just has worked out. But yeah, Jack is definitely going to spend all of his money. He always does. He's good at it.
Okay, and then a quick slide on the enterprise funds. So we've got our water, our wastewater, solid waste and airport. And you'll see that on the revenue side, other than the airport, we've got, all of them are above where we expected them to be at this, at this point in time. And then as far as the expenditure budget, they, they too, overall are below where they, where they should be.
Okay, any questions about fiscal year 2021? All right. We, of course, the, the thing that we always try to cover with you is PSPRS, the unfunded liability. It's a large number. If you're not sitting down, you will definitely want to sit down for this. It is definitely a showstopper and will take your breath away. As, as counselors that have been through this know from previous discussions.
All right. So the PSPRS system, we have two different plans in the PSPRS system. We have the police plan and the fire plan. They both operate separately and are managed separately. And so just some quick stats on where we were at the end of June 30th, 2020. So as an FYI, as we, as we go into, or as we went into the fiscal year 21 year, we did not have these numbers yet. We were using all of the numbers based on the June 30th, 2019. And so when we go into the fiscal year 22 budget, these will be the numbers that we'll be looking at as far as contribution rates and, and how we want to address the unfunded liability. So we've got our active members for each of the systems and where we are at the end of 2020. And I do want to just remind everyone that in 2020, we did dedicate that one-time payment of $3.1 million allocated evenly between each of these plans. So we're 57% funded in the police plan and 58.1% funded in fire. And based on that contribution that we made, that one-time payment, our contribution rate for police going into fiscal year 22 will be 49.45%. And our Kingman fire will be 48.11%. We know that we have a 20-year amortization period and that that ends in 2036 for actual, actuarial valuation purposes, but for our fiscal year, that's 2038. So the council adopted a pension funding policy back in 2019, and it has to be adopted every year, and they have kept it the same, which is basically every year, they are committed to paying down the PSPRS unfunded liability and getting to 100% funded. And they are doing this through paying into the system instead of what our payments would be based on actual salaries that are experienced on a, a bi-weekly period. Instead, we pay the entire budgeted PSPRS payment to PSPRS at the beginning of the fiscal year. In addition to that, as we go through the budgeting process, any additional fund balance in the general fund that is over 40% is dedicated to paying down the PSPRS through a one-time payment. And so because of that, this is the impact that it had on, on that 2020 report and how it will have on us going into fiscal year 22. So we made a contribution in excess of what our actual PSPRS expenditures would have been of just over 790,000, and then we made that $3.1 million payment. And so you'll see in fiscal year 21, where we were with our unfunded liability for police and what our unfunded liability contribution rate is, was at that time. And because of that contribution that we made, that one-time payment and the excess in, in, in the upfront payment, we were able to decrease the unfunded liability as well as that contribution rate. And the same goes for the fire system. So it definitely has an impact in our rates and in our unfunded liability by making these one-time payments. And we know that as we decrease those contribution rates, that only helps the general fund because it is a very large piece of our, of our, of our salaries, our personnel expenses. So what are, what are some options for paying down that unfunded liability? Well, one of them is let's not do anything and hope that the assumptions in the system beat the actual experience that we, that we have in the system. The other is exactly what, what you have done, counsel, which is adopting that pension funding policy and paying down the system. And there is another option that we have touched on over the past few months and that we will be bringing to you in the near future, and that is we can actually issue pension obligation bonds to basically get us to 100% funded immediately and then just make debt service payments of basically what we would be paying into the system anyhow. And so there were a lot of assumptions that I used in this chart, and, and they, they would definitely fluctuate year to year. But based on where we are today, if we were to do nothing, then we would make payments, you'll see, ranging anywhere from 3.7 million to 4.1 million and really having no effect at all on our contribution rate. If we do our one-time payments, which is what we're currently doing, and assuming that we're going to make additional one-time payments of $4 million over the next five fiscal years, then you'll see what our payments are, which is just about the $7 million range or eight, 7 to 8 million dollar range, but we will have an effect on our contribution rate. However, if we do the pension obligation bonds, you'll see what those payments look like. So more in line with what we're currently paying, and that contribution rate goes way down. So just to give you some different options that, that we've talked about and looked at.
And just, just to piggyback onto that, the pension obligation bonds, the reason why that happens is the monies ends, ends up working for you. And the result is you've got a much more predictable payment and you've accomplished your 100% immediately. So there's, it really becomes a win-win. And as Tina said, that is something in the next few months, we'll be discussing and more in depth with, with the council. And we're excited that this option is available. Prior, in prior years, we had been, it had been shared that, that this wasn't an option. And I think if you recall, when we reported on this, I had mentioned that I came, I just popped open an email one day announcing that Flagstaff had done this and saved millions and millions of dollars. And I went running to Tina's office and she said, hey, did you see what happened in Flagstaff? So it's, it's actually caught on. It's our understanding that now Yuma is now in the process and they're going to go through this, save millions of dollars again as Flagstaff is. And so we think that this really is going to be, end up being the formula that we follow that gets us 100% funded way ahead of time, ahead of the state statute of 2036 and saves us money over time. So pretty excited about sharing more information with the council on this.
And really, the main reason that these have come to light is because of the interest rate environment that we're in, and that's really the only reason. So that, I think that's why there's a push for all of the cities and counties to, to look at this option.
You know, I really, I still support option three for so many reasons. It's easier to budget if you always know what your payment's going to be every year. And we also know that we will have it paid off in time. But my question is, if we have to pay 5.9 million in that first year, do we have the money to be able to do that so that we can move forward with option three?
Yeah. So we've actually budgeted, as you see, Councilwoman, on the one-time payments even more than that 7.7. So yes, we do.
Okay, so we would be looking at 7.7 million for 2022?
Yep, and through, you'll see through 26, we've actually included a $4 million additional payment each of those fiscal years in our forecast.
That's so wonderful. This is the one I, I've said before, it keeps me up at night. And even though we've made these extra payments, it never looks like the total goes down enough, you know?
And you're absolutely right about that. As we were meeting with our financial advisors on this very subject, they, they were modeling it for us and showing us that exactly, exactly what you're, you're talking about is that we just weren't making the dent that we needed to. And in, at the rate that we were doing it, we were, we were still going to fall pretty, pretty short of being 100% by 2036. So this ends up, this ends up being much, as I said, much more predictable and it accomplishes the goal very quickly.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
So this is a great direction to, to look at. I don't think we'll ever see interest rates like this again. But, and also I think it's a morale builder for our protective services. I mean, to know that they are fully funded and, and that's never going to be an issue. But now we still will be required to make our annual payments, and that's not, not part of this discussion. Is that right?
So the, if you can go back, just back to that chart real fast for me, Mr. Foggan?
Our pension funding payments.
So we would still be required to. The rates would be considerably lower. They wouldn't be in the 49 to 50% range. It would be well under 20% is, is, is my guess. And the, those, those calculations on the chart on the screen include our debt service payment, our additional payments, and just our normal contribution that will still be required to make. All of, all of those calculations on the chart, or all of those numbers on the chart include all of the calculations.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Before we move on to our projections for, oh, before we talk about capital, I'm sorry. Any questions about PSPRS? Good question so far, so thank you for that. All right, well, let's talk about the current five-year capital improvement plan that we're, we're operating in right now. Ms. Tina?
All right. So we wanted to share with you the five-year capital improvement plan for non-enterprise funds, really as, especially for the newer council, council members, but to show what our existing sources for revenue are for these projects. And so right now, what we have for funding sources for the projects are our operating fund revenues. So whether that's additional TPT, state shared revenues, cash reserves, things that we've carried over from prior years. We have our room tax. We certainly rely on grants and any outside contributions. There are the options of GO bonds. And there's one project that we do have us issuing GO bonds. And then we have unused impact fees, park impact fees from back in the day that is being used on one of the projects as well. So we won't spend a lot of time on these slides. Again, it's just a way for you to be familiar with the funding sources for all of the projects that are budgeted, but they are all, much of them is cash reserves from room tax or construction tax or other sales tax that we have collected over the years. And so most of the, most of the projects that are listed are funded with, with those types of, of monies on this, on this slide. And then the same goes for public safety. And then when we look at the streets, we actually have our Rancho Santa Fe project that is being funded from many store, many sources. And fortunately, we have quite a bit of outside contributions through the developer and the, and the state that will be contributing to that project. But you'll also see that many of these projects are funded with room tax, HERF revenues for the pavement preservation and then construction tax. Okay.
And then one of the things that we've, we've talked about in the past and we wanted to bring up again was several years ago, we had a capital, five-year capital project list that had a whole bunch of projects on it that were, that had no revenue sources attached to them. And so it, it was telling a story that wasn't clear to people. And people thought that, that we were going to be able to fund all the capital projects that were on the five-year capital project list. And then we, as leadership, had to keep saying, no, these, these are projects that we know about, but there's no money associated with them. So we moved away from showing them in the five-year capital projects list to just basically, these are projects that we know about, we're aware of, we want to keep them in mind. And so we created what we, we've referred to now as the future projects list. And as we have, and we come across additional revenue or revenue savings, these are projects that would be evaluated and moved on to the five-year capital project list if revenue source is identified for them. So they, they, they actually, I think, have more meaning as future projects than just hanging out and being moved forward every year on the five-year capital project list like we were doing in the past. So that's what this list is. All added together, you can see that it's, it's a really large number of unfunded capital projects that, that, that we've identified as needs at some point in, in the future for capital, needs for this community.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
Sometimes I think you should have... Sometimes I think you should have red marks across the future projects that are really, need to be addressed immediately somehow, some way, but that's just like, like pavement preservation. But I did have a question about the ice rink. I saw that was in fiscal year 21. I don't know, I have not heard anything regarding that project, but I think with the pandemic, a lot has changed on that. Has anyone, has anyone secured that, that commitment to continue that?
So I'll just remind everybody that that was a project that was being privately driven in the private sector. And so we put, we put that in the five-year plan just, just to show that they were working on that. We were not sure when that money would be raised to do that project. And as, I have not heard anything about that project for, geez, at least, at least, I would say at least a year, unless Ms. Tina, have you heard anything? So yeah, we've not heard anything about it. We budgeted for it. We wanted to be prepared for it if the, if the private sector came up with the money so that we could move forward with it, but we have not heard anything about it. My guess is exactly what you said, which is that things have changed through COVID. I don't know what, if any, activity has been occurring with that.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions about capital?
Yeah, I have a question. To take the downtown infrastructure design to make it a reality, are we going to name that another project or is that going to be broken up into things like ADA improvements and that kind of thing?
Actually, we will continue to budget for that as the downtown infrastructure project. The, the design piece will be changed to probably just downtown infrastructure construction, something like that. So yes, we'll keep that, we'll probably, more than likely just change that line item title.
And then will we see funds dedicated to that in 2022?
Well, we haven't looked at the capital projects yet, but our plan is to say, at least my plan is to say, yes, you'll see some money and we'll have that conversation in our budget meetings with the council.
Great. Thank you.
All right. On to five-year forecast. So just remind everybody that this is the information that we're using to build the 22 budget and to look forward with our, with our five-year capital plan in place through 26. So Ms. Tina?
Okay. I also want to point out, when we're looking at our forecast, it, it changes throughout the time of building the budget. So where we are today and what we're seeing in TPT collections and state shared revenues may very easily change by the time that we actually get to the, to the budget season. But what we're seeing today is that you'll see that in fiscal year 21, which we talked about what those estimates would look like, we are putting in a very small decrease in our TPT for 22 and 23, you see, will be very slight. And then with a recovery in, in 24 and then moving forward. And again, we're doing that just to be cautious, thinking that there is going to be, like Mr. Foggan stated, the other, the other shoe to drop. So the same with the state shared revenues. We feel that those will go in the same line or the same manner as our TPT. So you'll see that in 22, we're expecting a 4% decrease in, in TPT, state shared revenues 1%. Another decline you'll see in 20, like I said, in 23, and then, and then more of that 4% increase in TPT for the out years. And again, that can change at any time.
Yeah, I just want to add that one of the things that Tina and I both pay attention to is the economic forecasting and any financial information that's pushed out by the state. Obviously, they control a large amount of our revenue that comes in. And so we, we will continue to monitor that as, as we, as we build this budget. Obviously, building the budget just as a precursor, and I don't think this will come as a surprise to anybody, is we try to be a little, I would say, under on revenue and a little bit over on expenditures. We, we're within reason, you know? You don't want to wildly miss the mark because projects and, and activities of the city are hurt by that. But at the same time, we try to be as realistic and, and on the conservative side as we possibly can. So, and I appreciate Ms. Tina for doing this. Five-year, the five-year forecasting is not an easy process. Takes a lot of work and kind of got to get your crystal ball out a little bit, along with some, some institutional knowledge and looking back at data over time. And so, yeah, these numbers are certainly not chiseled and stoned by any means, but I, I think Tina's and her team have done a great job putting this together.
I have a question on revenues. Is there anywhere for the development fees? Do you, do you project that or do you not project that because that actually hasn't been decided yet?
So the impact fees will not hit the general fund, Councilwoman. They will actually be deposited into project fund when we do collect those or if we do collect those. And depending on how we progress through public hearings and whatnot, will depend on how we budget for those when we get to May. So in our projections, they are not included because they would not be included in the general fund or anything that we're reporting on today.
So if it were to pass, you would adjust accordingly?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I do want to point out, because you talked about revenues that were included, I do want to share that we did include recreational marijuana sales tax collections from the state starting in fiscal year 23. And that is a small amount, but it is something, so just about $250,000. So that, that has been included. So then looking at our total revenues and transfers versus our total expenditures and transfers and what that looks like over the next five years. So starting in 21, we know that we could have never expected the growth that we're experiencing. And so we expect to have revenues and incoming transfers of just under $42 million and spending $32 million. So a big variance there. And then moving into 22, you'll see our revenues going back down to a more level that we're used to seeing. And then our expenditures in 22 increasing and then leveling out to, to what we're, we're more used to seeing. So just wanted to share a little bit about the fund balance policy that has been adopted by the council, I want to say in 2013. And we talk about that 25 to 50% range of our budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers. So every year when we enter the budget season, we ensure that we are between that 25 to 50% of what our budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers are. The council did state that last year they wanted to make one, or in fiscal year 20, anything between 40 and 50% or anything above that 40% range would be dedicated to a one-time payment to PSPRS. And so if we exceed that 50% and we haven't, we haven't dedicated it to any, any sort of one-time expense, then the policy is to look at that overage and then spend it on one-time expenditures, capital projects, for instance, or new programs.
Yeah, and I, I'll just pitch in on this as well. And that is the one thing that, that Tina and I are very careful with and talk about a lot is that we, we want to always, as much as possible, not, it may not always be possible, but as much as possible, spend one-time money on one-time items. Because what you end up with is if you budget against one-time items for reoccurring expenditures and those one-time items or one-time revenues go away, then you end up really affecting your ongoing services pretty dramatically. So it does something that we're very careful about and do everything that we can to make sure that the reoccurring revenues are paying for reoccurring expenditures and that one-time revenue is covering one-time expenditures.
So based on that, we'll look at our forecast for fund balance. So we ended fiscal year 20 with $24.3 million in fund balance based on the year that we had that we weren't expecting in 20. And then in 21, you'll see that we're going to end up with $33.9 million. However, that will, that will decrease to 22 to 26 million and then go down. Part of that is that $4 million one-time PSPRS payment that we are including in our projections. One of the reasons that, that those will decrease also some, some construction sales tax money being moved over to capital projects to fund some of those non-enterprise capital projects. So those are two of the major reasons for the decreases in fund balance in the out So then also looking at our HERF major revenue sources, we have since fiscal year 19, so we, Jack talked about that pavement preservation tax. And so we did have a, a one-time of pavement preservation tax in fiscal year 19 that the HERF fund was able to utilize. But there going forward, or since that year, HERF and the restaurant and bar tax are the major revenue sources for the HERF fund. And I know Jack did share that with you last night as well. And so there isn't a lot of change. We don't expect HERF to increase or decrease, certainly not at this point. That, that could certainly happen, but at this point, we're not expecting it. And our restaurant and bar tax is pretty, pretty flat. And then what do those revenues and transfers and expenses and transfers and fund balance look like? Well, this assumes that in fiscal year 22 through fiscal year 26, that we will spend $1.2 million in pavement preservation. We did dedicate that in 21 as well. And so with that, you'll see that the expenses clearly outweigh the revenues, which is, which reflects the decrease in fund balance, which is the yellow line. And then the airport, we're always interested in the airport, it being a new fund and a new operation and where we expect that to be. So the airport fund pretty much covers its expenses and outgoing transfers. And that's what we're expecting in the out years too, unless something dramatically changes.
Yeah, I would say on the airport, the airport has been pretty challenging in that we didn't have a lot, well, we didn't have any data prior to taking it over. And so it's, it's been somewhat of a juggling act to try to guess what these projections would look like. We're, we're starting to get a better feel for it. I think Tina and her team, as well as Joe Husband, and have been able to kind of get this more dialed in. And I think the comfort level with budgeting for the airport is, is, is getting, feeling a little bit better now because, you know, prior to that, we just, we were, we were doing a whole bunch of guessing and hoping we were right. Luckily, I would say that, that for the most part, we got, we did get it right and, but feeling a lot more comfortable with this five-year projection than we have in the last couple of years.
Manager Foggan?
Yes.
Can you tell me what encompasses the airport revenues? I mean, over and above the sale of property? Is there anything in addition to that?
That would impact the airport revenues?
Yeah. What, what's inclusive of, in the airport revenues?
So we've got mostly, Councilwoman, it is our hangar leases, our land leases and our building leases. And so as long as those, and, and, and some of those large leases are long-term leases. And so as long as those continue, there isn't a lot of fluctuation, which is kind of why you see it pretty flat. The, we are building some, I guess, some secure fencing areas to where we could store some more planes. So that would, could potentially impact the airport revenues in a big way. But in talking to, to Joe, it, that would be a, a longer term impact and certainly not all at once. You know, it would be gradual and in phases. But, but that could be an area that we would see outside of land sales where, where we would have an impact in the airport fund.
Yeah, the parked planes are, are good revenue as long as they stay parked. And that's good and bad for, for the, for the national economy. But yeah, for, for the time being, the expansion of the airport property to take more storage and to have more, more companies interested in storage is an advantage. But it, it really boils down to continuing to look for people to come to the airport, do business and lease space and, and, and be active at the airport to make sure that that revenue continues to be stable over time.
Okay. Yeah, just because I, I'm, you know, it's a perfect opportunity to explore different opportunities for revenue out there since we have this great asset. So I just wanted to know what was included so I knew what to be thinking about. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good question. All right. Any questions about the five-year forecast? Okay.
Well, I do, I'm sorry. This just occurred to me. You know, we had kind of talked about selling the city's property at Kingman Crossing. And I know that that project is up in the air right now and hopefully we get some answers soon about new timelines. But have, have we started planning for selling that land or is that still just on the sidelines?
It's still on the sidelines. Until, until that project, as you said, gets reinvigorated and there's some development activity there, the value of that property will, will not be where we want it to be until we see activity at Kingman Crossing and that interchange being constructed. At that point, it would definitely be the time where we would talk, want to talk about what, you know, what does that property end up doing for, of course, the sale of it, but it'd be one-time, a one-time sale. So what, what would be the one-time use of that, of those funds? But yeah, we, we've not anticipated selling it or, or incorporating it into any capital planning.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
A tangential question. Since we're looking now at the delay kind of of the phase two land at the airport, I'm just curious about the development and marketing plan for that acreage. And is that going to be something that we address in house? Are we going to be discussing that as part of budget as we move forward?
It, it will be in future year discussions. Once it's, you know, obviously being able to sell it will not occur until it's released by the FAA. Once that occurs, it, the discussion will be what capital projects, how is that going to be incorporated into the development and use at, at the airport?
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Well, let's talk about one of the things that, that we've started talking about a couple of years ago with the council, and that is new and additional revenue streams. The pressure is, is, is always there to provide better services, to provide improved services, to provide more services, to do capital projects. And I'll just remind everybody that the city really has for its general fund and its capital project fund, we, we have two major revenue sources. We have TPT or sales tax and we have state shared revenue. And as, as many people in our community do not know, and it's worth pointing out once again, the city of Kingman does not have a proper again, the city of Kingman does not have a property tax. And over the last couple of years, we've talked to the council about what our revenue streams look like. And as you can see from the table, we, I've mentioned sales tax, state shared revenue, we have user fees, we've done a great job with grants, and then we have outside contributions. Tina had pointed out that the work that we're doing with the developer and the state on Rancho Santa Fe is a good example of outside contributions as part of our revenue streams. You know, the CARES Act money was, would be considered outside contributions. And then, you know, what's kind of hanging out there as new and additional? You know, an additional increase to TPT or a tweak to TPT, things that we've talked about with the council would be dedicated TPT increase for specific items based on Jack's, Jack Plante's presentation last night. Dedicated TPT increase to fund our road maintenance program. Other additional TPT ideas would be there, the city of Kingman does not have a TPT on food. So there's sales tax on food that we've talked about in the past. So there's a couple of different TPT options that, that could be available to the city moving forward. Of course, we've talked about the primary property tax as something that would be acceptable to the citizens. I'll just remind everybody that we did, we worked with a company that specializes in polling and they polled our community in 2019 and found that about 40% of the community was in favor of property tax and about 40% were against property tax. And I think, as I recall from the percentages, the property tax support was a few percentage points higher. But the recommendation from the, from the consultant was definitely not to move forward with any kind of election to have a property tax because there wasn't a great enough spread between those that supported and those that were against. And the number of people on, on the fence on the, on the subject was, it was too great of a number to try to think that you were going to convince those people to support a, a primary property tax. So we have looked at it. We kind of left it at if we did anything with property tax, it would be to ask the voters if they would support us looking at property tax. We, we kind of thought that was maybe an idea moving forward, but not anything that we, that we have currently recommended or are considering now. And then other items that we brought before the council is impact fees. We talked to the council at our budget kickoff meeting in 2019.
For 2020, so in January.
Yeah, so, so January, we talked about impact fees as a source of revenue to take care, to help with some capital that is, that comes along with growth. And so as you all know, we've been working with a consultant to develop what are affectionately now called development fees. It's interchangeable with impact fees. And so we're in that process now and we'll be talking about impact fees at our next council meeting. So we are moving forward with that as discussed with council in previous kickoff meetings. And then user fees, one of the, the main user fees that we've talked about is something that impacts, many people don't understand this, is that the stormwater impacts our, our streets department. They're the ones that are responsible for the stormwater and money is going out of our streets to take care of stormwater issues. So one of the things that we presented to the council was let's have a stormwater user fee. That's being developed now and will be something that we are talking with the council shortly. And then the final one was fire district. One of the things that the city is not allowed to do currently is have a fire district that we control. We could allow our fire department to become part of a district, but the city would lose to do that, the city would lose all control of the fire department. And the, the transition would, would, would be all nearly impossible. Matter of fact, in talking with our people across the state, a, a city-run fire department has, to our knowledge, has never become a fire district. It's actually been the opposite direction. Fire districts have peeled up, been peeled off and made into city fire departments. But one of the things that we did last year was create some, with the help of Tom Dorn and his team and Andrew McGuire, we created some legislation that did get sponsored, that was allowed cities to have and create a fire district that they, that they basically controlled. With the COVID outbreak, as you know, they went into basically hibernation mode and all of that legislation was buried. And so we're now in the process of trying to develop some allies. I don't think this year is probably the year to, to talk about that in discussions with the league and discussions with Tom Dorn. We really want to continue to talk about this with state leadership and with other cities and then bring this back for the 2022 legislative session and see if we can get any additional energy behind it. Because Kingman by themselves, probably we are not going to be able to push this legislation through. But if we have some cities behind us and some support, the feeling is that this is something that would be beneficial not only to Kingman, but to a number of communities. I know the mayor and I presented this to a, a leg, a league subcommittee last year and it fell on deaf ears. And really, I think that the people that we were presenting it to had failed to understand what, really what we were, what we were trying to accomplish with this. And so a little bit more legwork and some effort. And the reason why we want to go this direction is because a fire district would allow us to charge basically a property tax for our fire service. And that would free up general fund money to be, to go towards other services and capital projects. So that's, that's the, the idea behind having a fire district. Or as we've talked about in the past, maybe it would be more of a public safety district, including both fire and police together. So that, those are really the, the arrows in the quiver that we've had to kind of shoot at this. And is, is there another slide that goes with this?
I think there's two more slides.
Two more slides. I'll, I'll let you cover.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
One thing about the fire district legislation that was proposed, it, it did just basically give the city the ability to take that to the voters to create a secondary tax. So it did fall on deaf ears. A lot of them were urban committee people who thought we should just, you know, raise our sales tax, but couldn't really surround taking this avenue. So, but I, I think it's important to note that it, it would be just the ability to take it to the voter approval.
Exactly right. It was, it was never something that the city would just be able to automatically impose. It was, hey, let us ask our voters if they would support it. And, and that was clearly misunderstood by the people that we, that Mayor and I talked to. So there's, there's definitely more work to be done with that. So anything else on that? All right, Ms. Tina.
Yeah. So this slide just gives you an idea that, of what we are currently collecting in sales tax as far as the rates are concerned and what the TPT collections, which funds they're supporting. And then there's just a table below that if an additional TPT rate increase was something that you wanted to move forward with at some point in the future, giving you an idea on the sales tax collections by type, by the rate, how much in revenue that those, those would, would collect. And so you'll see that a half percent increase on our regular sales tax rate or TPT rate would generate about $3.8 million. As Mr. Foggan said, the food for home consumption, we've talked about this before in the past with councils. We don't have goo, good data or great data as far as being able to say that for certain a quarter percent rate would generate $220,000. But in talking to some of the cities that have a food for home consumption tax, we're able to put something together that you can consider. So, so these are the different rates and revenue generations for tax categories for your consideration.
And Ron, can you just remind us how much Jack said he needs each year for street maintenance?
So the graphs that Jack presented last night, he was showing that to, to turn around the PCI or the pavement condition index and go up one, one number each year, the amount of money that we'd need to be spending is approximately $5.7 million a year.
And that's every year?
Yes, ma'am. And.
And we don't have those funds right now.
No. And actually, what, what ends up happening is that inflation eats into that a little bit. So to keep up, to, to keep up with it, it, it's probably an increasing number over a certain, you know, maybe not every, not every year, but certainly to, to, to try to keep up with the aging infrastructure, it's something that would have to grow a little bit over time as well.
And then if we consider the fact that it'll be two more years now until we can put something to the voters or a little less than two years, that number is going to be even higher by then?
Correct. Yep.
So Manager Foggan, at this point, you say it's 5.7 million a year and he has 1.5 million budgeted this year?
1.2.
1.2. So there's a large discrepancy.
Yeah, and there ha, the city's, in Jack's graphs last night, there, there's been a discrepancy since 2002. And e- even prior to that, it's questionable whether the city was spending enough money on streets. So this isn't something that just, you know, we woke up in, in 2015 and went, oh my gosh, we're, we're not spending enough money. I, I think it's been clear that we haven't, that the city has not had the road funds available for quite some time, when you have an average spend for the last 20 years of, of $800,000. So, all right. As far as new revenue streams, I think I've covered most of this. I guess one of the spots that I, I do want to point out is that on, on the impact fees, if we can, if we follow the current schedule and it gets passed, fee adoption and actual fee, is it adoption or collection? Will start in August.
The adoption.
Yeah, the adoption will be in 2021, collection will then follow that. So that's on the current calendar that, that we've provided and what we're working through. On the stormwater rates, we are in, in the phase of data completion and should have something not too long after that. And then I, I've already talked a lot about the fire district. So that, we need state legislation to be able to do, to, to move forward with that. So, all right. Any other questions about revenues? All right. Let's talk about.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
It takes me minutes on you. Could you just review what the uses of impact fees could address?
Yes, so impact fees are limited to growth increase or items based on growth only. So that is basically if you have, you, so if we build a new park, that money can go towards building that new park. If you want to replace a piece of equipment in a park and it needs to be larger because the, because more people are using the park because the city has grown, you can only pay for the increase in size of the playground. It cannot pay for the entire playground. If you're building a street, if you need to widen the street, impact fees can help widen the street, but it cannot help in, in just improving the street. For fire and police, it, the impact fees can be used to buy new equipment when we need to add more personnel. It can, it can actually help build additional office space and fire stations because you're adding additional police and fire personnel and need large, or you need to cover different parts of the city that are, are not being covered because different parts of the city are growing. So it's very specific to how you can use it and where you can use it. And, and as Tina said in her ear, in part of the earlier presentation, is that impact fees have their own spot that are tracked and reported annually. And there, a lot of attention is paid to that. You also have a certain amount of years in which you have to spend impact fee money. So I think the state has a requirement that if you collect impact fee in year, in year one, all of that money that's been collected in year one has to be spent by year six. It can also be used to pay for debt if you build something as part of new growth.
And there are audits involved with those as well. Every two years required to have audits on those. If I can just have a quick go back and Mr. Foggan, I just want to correct what I said. So the adoption of the fees, you were correct. The adoption is in May.
Everybody, mark that down. I finally beat Tina on one thing.
And the fees actually do become effective in August, so we would collect them at that point.
Got one right.
Two points. Well, thank you for that explanation. I, I appreciate it. And it also, I think it's important for everyone to realize that it doesn't address pavement preservation.
No.
And sadly, that's still going to be an issue.
Correct.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Now, we're just, not going to spend a lot of time on this. We just, we wanted, I know that everybody is aware that we're in the process of looking at rates for several things. And so I just asked, I thought, since it's something that we've covered in the past, that it would be something that, that would, we would just keep you up to date on. So Ms. Tina, you want to walk us through where we are?
Sure. So we've got a solid waste rate study and a water rate study that are both underway and that, so they are going to follow the same timeline. We are going to take both of those to the municipal utilities commission at the end of this month and then bring a notice of intent to the council in the second meeting in February, hold a public hearing for both of those in, for the second meeting in April, and then those fees will become effective on July 1st, according to this plan, if nothing changes.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. As I mentioned, we're, we are in the process of looking at the stormwater fees. Of course, we're, we're not able to show you kind of, there, the process is underway, but it, as far as when, when we'll have those to you, that's still up in the air. Any questions on either one of these fees? Or rate increases? All right. Our final item is the budget calendar. And so you'll find that we've got our first checkmark. And so we're happy to have our kickoff meeting done. The next step will be a strategic planning council retreat. Says TBD. I am happy to announce that I've actually got this firmed up as of today. So please mark your calendars for February 26th, that's a Friday. Patrick Arbora, you remember Patrick has done a couple of our retreats in the past. Patrick is going to do a virtual. Patrick is going to do a virtual retreat with us on the twenty-sixth. It will be, please plan on that being a full day. I apologize that it's going to be virtual, but just the world we currently live in, that's, that's the way that he's having to conduct his business as well. And he will, I've basically provided for, for Patrick the work that we did last year with our strategic plan. So Patrick will be working through that strategic plan with us and helping us kind of have a vision for what twenty twenty-two actions should be and what we want from, from our strategic plan. So excited about that. Melinda will be contacting you with one-on-one appointments if you'll please make yourselves available for those. That is for the council as well as the, the senior leadership team. So please be prepared, have your calendar out. I think that he's asked to do that work in the first week in February. So if you haven't heard from Melinda, you will be hearing from her on that. So that is the next step, February twenty-sixth. Then we have April twenty-ninth, and that is basically, we, we show you our, our preliminary budget and our capital work that we've been doing. May fifth, Cinco de Mayo will be the budget and CPI work session, and May sixth will be part two to that. And then on June first, we will have the tentative budget for you to adopt, and then the second meeting in June will be the final budget for adoption. And that is our calendar. And again, I, I want to thank Melissa and Tina for all of their hard work that they've already put in, as well as the leadership team. They've been working fast and furious on the, the capital, five-year capital projects, and it takes a, a great amount of effort and time to do that. So I appreciate everybody's effort. I also want to thank the council for joining us at this kickoff meeting. This is the end of our presentation. Is there any final questions that we can answer as we wrap this up? All right, Mayor, not hearing anything. So again, thank you, everybody, and back to you, Mayor.
Thank you both. Manager Foggan and Director Moline, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it, and we're ready to move forward to strategic planning. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.